Patrick in pink. Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. It is five thirty exactly, and it's our Committee of the Whole meeting for February twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two. Several of us are wearing pink shirts tonight in recognition of Anti-Bullying Day, which is tomorrow, just to support and recognize this important topic in our community. So today, we will start with our agenda. Could someone move to accept the agenda? Now, our councillor Reed.
I'll so move as presented.
Thank you. All in favor? Carry. And we will look to adopt the previous minutes of the Committee of the Whole for February seventh. Mayor Janon, so moved?
So moved.
All in favor? Carry. Tonight, we have a delegation, Action on Smoking and Health, from ASH Canada. I'd like to call up Mr. Hagan to the podium. Good evening.
Hi. Thanks for having me. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Take it away.
Just bring up the presentation here. I think. Thanks, Lee. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time. My name is Les Hagan. I'm the Executive Director of Action on Smoking and Health, and ASH is one of Canada's leading tobacco-controlled organizations. I'd like to commend Town Council for making public health a top priority during the pandemic, and we encourage you to keep doing so. ASH was founded in Edmonton in nineteen seventy-nine, and we are involved with a number of health organizations. We work cooperatively, and we provide leadership and public education, policy development, and community mobilization activity to help reduce and prevent tobacco use in Alberta, Canada, and beyond. Here are some quick tobacco facts. Tobacco has an enormous impact on our quality of life, our health, of course, and our healthcare system. Tobacco kills fifty thousand Canadians annually, which is about twenty percent of all deaths in the country. And in fact, one in every two long-term smokers will die because of tobacco use, which translates into about a million people who are presently alive in Canada are suffering with a tobacco-related disease. There is an economic cost, about eleven billion annually. That's roughly split between healthcare costs and reduced productivity. So many employers feel the burden of tobacco use and the impact it has on absenteeism and sick leave, long and short-term disability. Tobacco smoke kills about a thousand Canadians annually. There's no safe level of exposure. And of course, thousands of chemical compounds in second-hand smoke. And just some quick facts on vaping. In recent years, there's been an explosive rise in vaping, particularly among youth. According to the last national survey, over four hundred thousand Canadian youth were vaping, had vaped in the last thirty days. And a great majority of these adolescents will develop a long-term addiction to nicotine. Children and youth who vape are at a threefold risk of smoking. In order to keep youth tobacco and nicotine free, we need to model smoke-free behavior to children and adolescents. Modeling is an essential element of childhood development. If we model healthy behaviors, we're more likely to get healthy kids and vice versa. The more smoking cues that a child receives during their childhood, the more likely they are to become smokers themselves. ASH is urging municipalities to align public restrictions on all forms of smoking and vaping to the greatest extent possible. Comprehensive public smoking restrictions are needed on all forms of smoking and vaping to help keep youth tobacco and nicotine free for life. Tobacco use kills fifty times more Canadians than cannabis. From a public health perspective, any restrictions that can be justified for cannabis use and consumption can be justified for tobacco use. In Cochrane, cannabis consumption is prohibited in almost all public places. Tobacco smoking and nicotine vaping are prohibited in only a few public areas, including outdoor pools and skating rinks, playgrounds and sports fields, and public recreation centers. We encourage the town of Cochrane to align restrictions on tobacco vaping and cannabis to the greatest extent possible. Specifically, we request that you make all parks, public recreation spaces, and public events completely smoke-free. A growing number of Alberta municipalities have already taken this step, including Oketoke, Strathmore, Locom, Camrose, Beaumont, St. Albert, Vermilion, and Lloydminster. And Calgary will be exploring it shortly. The Alberta government has aligned provincial restrictions on cannabis, tobacco, and vaping. And that includes a number of public places with the exception of parks and public events, which we are asking municipalities to cover. So here are our specific recommendations. We encourage council to ban all forms of smoking and vaping at all public events, at all parks, and public recreation amusement spaces. Secondly, that the bylaw should extend to all outdoor public events, including markets, since children and youth also frequent these events. Smoking ban should also be extended to group living facilities. Residents of group living facilities should not be forced to breathe second-hand smoke in their own home, especially if they already have illnesses that are affected. And a growing number of municipalities are also banning smoking in hotel and motel rooms. And in fact, Airdrian Cochrane already took that step about fifteen years ago without suffering any business consequences. Signage is an important element of enforcement. No smoking area should be clearly visible, and signs should be prominently placed in public spaces. Council should apply, consider applying license fees to tobacco retailers and vape shops. A growing number of Canadian municipalities have done this, including Calgary, Edmonton, Lloydminster, and St. Albert. Actually, Lloydminster was the first municipality in Canada to license vape shops just a few years ago. These license fees can be redirected to youth education, retailer training, and enforcement costs. So ASH has a model smoke-free bylaw that'll address all of these issues. We're trying to make it easy for everyone. And here's a summary checklist of the gold standard bylaw provisions for the town of Cochrane. And we look forward to the opportunity of working with you and your staff to develop a gold standard smoking and vaping bylaw. We also have a policy hub online that lists numerous policies and resources in each Western province. And we welcome people to visit the site and check your municipality against others. And finally, smoking rates are at an all-time low in Canada, and public smoking restrictions are an important part of our overall success. We need to continue to provide further protection, especially for children and youth. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that information. I can say that I'm sure happy things have changed over the years. When the changes first started to happen, people dug their heels in, but we've seen so much success in the community. I sit on the board that looks after the Big Hill Lodge here in Cochrane, and they still have a smoking room. And it's causing a lot of problems for those that don't smoke, because you can't conceal it into the room. So we're going to be looking at that in the very near future. Questions for councillor?
Thank you for the information. I am curious. I never heard anything about the school system and how maybe you're involved in relaying this information to students. As a person with a youngster in high school, I do understand the vaping. And sometimes it's not necessarily about actually the act of smoking, but the act of fitting in. And so I'm wondering if you have anything on the agenda for dealing with the school system.
So yeah, ASH is a relatively small organization, so we don't, we aren't involved with direct service, delivery, or prevention programs. But we help develop these things, and we work with other organizations. And we encourage governments to adopt policies to support prevention programs in schools. And there are some good ones out there. So we definitely, and we work with school boards on school board policies and practices. And of course, right now, schools are the epicenter of the vaping epidemic. So we've, on our website, we've got a number of resources to help. But really, you know, schools, kids aren't getting a message about, you know, go ahead and smoke when they're in class. They're not. You know, they're getting health education, information. It's in the curriculum. These things can always be improved, but kids are not getting pressured to smoke in the classroom or vape. It's when they get out of the classroom, it's when they get out of the school, it's when they get into the community. And it's, social modeling can be just as influential as parental modeling. So your authority extends well beyond the classroom, well beyond the school, and throughout the entire community. And we encourage you to use that authority and that responsibility to encourage kids to grow up smoke-free and to reduce the amount of smoking cues and vaping cues that they're going to receive in the greater community.
Thank you for that. Yeah, because I mean, in my household, none of us smoke. But go back, you know, when I was a youngster, I mean, almost everybody smoked. But nowadays, you just don't see that. So I am still surprised a little bit of how many teenagers tend to gravitate that way. And it's not necessarily because of parental influence. Certainly not societal influence, but it's still very much prominent in their grades to try to fit in. And I do agree with you. It is more of a want than necessarily an addiction point of view of continuing to smoke, right?
I think as a society, we have failed kids, and we're seeing that on vaping, right? And where tobacco and vaping companies have stepped in and have aggressively marketed kids through social media, retail promotions, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, we have to look out for kids, and that's what this is all about, and protect them from tobacco companies and vaping companies who would love to have their business.
Thank you. Councillor Reed?
Yeah, thanks, Les, for your presentation. That was really interesting and informative. And I'm assuming that we'll have the opportunity, administration will make some recommendations in terms of bringing forward our proposals for council to consider. You know, in a personal mode, I grew up in a household when I'm of that age where both of my parents spoke, my grandparents spoke. Because my parents smoked, I didn't want to smoke. And in particular, because I think I was fourteen or fifteen and watched my grandfather die of cancer. And, you know, hack is long out for the last year of his life, and that was enough to scare me away from. So, I mean, I know it's probably not politically correct, but do you use scare tactics in terms of being able to say, this is what it's going to do your lungs, it's going to do your body? I mean, I have, of my ten grandchildren, four or five of them are teenagers, and they tell me that vaping is a real problem in their schools, somewhere in B.C. and some in Alberta. And so much so that they had said, you know, Papa, they're even adding flavors to these things, right? So they're trying to entice us in so many different ways. And, you know, that's a little different than the day I grew up in. But, you know, for me, modeling, I think, is important. I don't know that it would have affected me any differently. I would have seen what I saw and did what I did. But, you know, I do worry about this generation, you know. Marty's right. I mean, sometimes this fit in socially, and in my era, people smoked, right, because that was a cool thing to do. But, and maybe these young adults, teenagers are getting hooked into this because of that. But yeah, if there's stuff that we could do in terms of bylaws to help our community, help our youth, then that would be, that would be great.
One way to think about this, you know, you mentioned scare tactics. You know, we have pretty strong health warnings on cigarettes in Canada, and they have had an impact. There's no doubt about it. It's been published. And they've been among the strongest health warnings in the country. But we still have four million people smoking, so they're obviously not working for everyone, right? But what I can tell you, the two most effective things to reduce smoking are A, tax increases, and B, smoking restrictions. So, you know, you can't increase tobacco taxes as a council under Municipal Government Act, but you can bring in smoking restrictions. So, you know, you've got the second most powerful tool at your disposal. And encourage you to use that.
Sure.
So the twenty percent of people who die of tobacco, is that firsthand or secondhand smoke or a combination thereof?
Fifty thousand is smokers. And then there's another thousand non-smokers who die from exposure to second-hand smoke.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor McFadden?
Yeah, thank you, Les. It's good to see you again on your regular tour of keeping us updated, I guess. I am glad to see in your report that, you know, smoking rates are at an all-time low, which I was glad to hear. And also reflecting similar to my colleagues about how our culture has changed around smoking. And a long time ago, when I used to go to the bar, everybody was still smoking, and you would come home and you would, you know, smell disgusting. And that doesn't happen anymore. But then also the experience, you know, with seniors that have carried on smoking through their lives and the need to still do that or not in their final, final years. So it's still something we're working through as a society. But if I understand, kind of the point of your presentation is to highlight, and you've got kind of a template bylaw and available to us. And I know Cochrane has done a lot of these steps in recent years. The gap, though, that you were identifying for us between kind of what we've got now and what you're saying best in classes was pretty much coming down to using those restrictions to eliminate smoking in parks. And what was the other one?
Well, parks and public events primarily. But the other way to look at this is if you simply align your restrictions on anything that can be smoked or vaped. So if you just bring tobacco up to cannabis, cannabis is a significant issue, right? But cannabis kills about a thousand Canadians annually, and that includes impaired driving. Tobacco kills fifty thousand, right? So anything that your council can do justify with respect to cannabis consumption, you can justify by a factor of fifty on tobacco, right? And we have, you know, there are municipalities in this district that have taken that step, including Oketokes and Strathmore. Airdrian's looking at this as well, and they've got decent alignment, but they're not quite there. Calgary will be looking at it soon. We're talking to Chestamere. I presented to them a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, it's happening. And we've made huge progress on tobacco. It's one of the biggest public health success stories of the last fifty years. Our smoking rates today are half of what they were twenty years ago, but this is not the time to let off the gas. The next big, the big agenda here is to get our smoking rates down to five percent by twenty thirty-five. That's the national goal, five by thirty-five. But the only way we're going to do that is if we keep doing what we have been doing at all levels of government, including municipal.
Okay. Excellent. Well, thanks for the clarification on that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councillor Videga?
One more quick question. I do remember this coming forward in, not in last term, but I think the council before us, is that this was brought up, but how do you handle, I guess, basically the enforcement of bringing in a bylaw as this, right? Because I think that was the biggest concern before, is that how do you actually patrol it? I mean, when you have limited numbers and...
Well, I would say right now, the bylaw is more difficult to enforce than what we are proposing. Because right now, when it comes to vaping, you can't tell when anyone's vaping. It's more likely to smell like cherry or grape than cannabis or tobacco. How do you enforce that? You know, you can't. What we're talking about is making any form of smoking or vaping prohibit any form in public places, particularly those where children are allowed. So the simple act of smoking or vaping becomes the offense. It's easy to see, easy to spot. And history tells us, experience tells us, that these laws are largely self-enforcing, right? And it's not about a hundred percent compliance, you know? We still have people who drink and drive. We still have people who don't wear their seat belts. Do we consider these laws to be failures? No, no, we don't, because the vast majority of people comply, and it sets a new social standard. So that's what this is about, setting a new standard. And if we only get ninety percent compliance the first year, that's wonderful. If we get ninety-five the second year, the third, you know? It's really about setting a social standard and making it clear to the public, and especially to children and youth, that smoking is not encouraged in this municipality and many others. And vaping, for that matter.
You make a great point. Just I think back kind of to that conversation. I remember, and I think one of the biggest hard places was for, like, Samuels Family Sports Center, where you had people who, it was said you couldn't smoke within X amount of meters within the door. You'd have people lighting up. They couldn't enforce it. The staff couldn't enforce it. By the time, you know, you call municipal enforcement, that person is long gone, right? So I think it's, you're right, it's a cultural kind of message. Just I worry about the enforcement of trying to bring this in and saying there's just no smoking anywhere, because I think people honestly are going to do it, and they're going to do it regardless of what that message is. And you're never going to be able to one hundred percent enforce it. We can certainly encourage it. I just worry about bringing in this bylaw.
And people still drink and drive, right? And we're never going to stop everyone from impaired driving. But we can certainly take a stand, and we can certainly put tools in place to discourage that. And the vast majority of people will comply, and that's the history with smoking restrictions. Is the vast majority, you know, smokers are not criminals, right? They're addicted. And they want some encouragement too, a lot of them, because it helps them quit. And they also don't want their kids to start smoking. I can assure you of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other lights on. You finished, Councillor Videga? I was just curious how long Strathmore and Oketokes have had their bylaw in place and how it's been working.
Which community?
Strathmore and Oketokes.
Oh, so this, Strathmore and Oketokes, it was either late twenty eighteen or early twenty nineteen, so they've had several years. But, you know, your staff could definitely follow up with their bylaw people and check directly. But they've had good success with their bylaws.
That would be the next steps. We don't make any decisions here tonight, but we'll look into it and check with them and see how things are going. And we have been a leader in this, so we don't want to get behind either.
Absolutely. Yeah, Cochrane has been a leader, and it's an issue of leapfrogging. So now you can leapfrog ahead of other communities.
Great. Well, thank you for coming out tonight and all the information.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Beautiful spot, beautiful location.
Bye-bye. Okay, on to five A. We're going to have a Parks and Recreation Committee update from Ms. Lowe.
Good evening, Mayor and councillor. This evening, I am here to introduce the Parks and Rec Committee work plan priorities for two thousand and twenty-two. Councillor McFadden is Chair of that committee, so can elaborate a little bit more on what those priorities are. But when we were meeting with the committee this year, it was a little bit about reframing what the priorities might be. The committee has worked quite diligently on, over the last couple of years, on identifying priorities for specifically the Horse Creek Sports Park. Has met with a number of the local interest groups in the community. And it was really about trying to decide what is some meaningful things that they can really take hold of this year as we move towards reinvigorating the Community Services Department, pulling parks and open spaces into that portfolio, and knowing that we have a recreation master plan in our future. So it was determined that the best way to utilize the passion and the commitment that these committee members have is to really focus on projects that could help feed some of the data and some of the information that's going to be needed in defining the future recreation master plan. So where we've landed is the committee is going to work on a community connectivity gap analysis. So that would really get the committee members out in the public, identifying where there may be areas that have gaps, whether that's in paths, sidewalks, whether it's because they're not paved, or because they're in formal trail systems. And then from there, also working towards community partnership discussions. We have a very involved community in Cochrane and a lot of very passionate groups. And I think where there has been a gap and where there is opportunity is for this committee to pull those groups together and have facilitated conversations about what is working, what is not working. How can they work together to achieve some of the things that they're trying to successfully orchestrate in our community as well? Not necessarily always the town taking on the role of providing all of those services, but how can we help facilitate those discussions? And then, community survey. So leading into the recreation master plan, there is definitely going to be the need for community engagement, not the least of which would be a community survey. Obviously, that's going to be dependent on the capacity of our Communications Department, who is in the process of rebuilding that team. And so that would be a little bit later on in the year that we would start to work with them. But we really see it as an opportunity to feed some of the data that any consultant is going to require in formulating a meaningful recreation master plan that has had some involvement, certainly from this committee as a key stakeholder, and then the larger community as a whole. So outside of that, I would turn it over to Councillor McFadden if she has anything she wishes to add specifically.
Yeah, probably not anything specifically. As a community, as we're going through that process of, you know, rebuilding our community services and building up the capacity to focus on our recreation, the Parks and Recreation Committee, as identified, has put in a lot of work in supporting the Horse Creek Sports Park Master Plan and a number of other projects prior to that. So at our last meeting, the group kind of sat down and brainstormed about, you know, what is the skills, talents, and interests that the group could bring to the table to kind of support the municipality's work to creating that recreation master plan? So in selecting the projects that the group wanted to work on, the discussion was about, you know, what could be done? And how do we make sure that everything that we do within that committee is in alignment with feeding into the recreation master plan? And just really understanding the ongoing capacity building that we're going through as an organization. Kind of a number of different passion projects were stalled out in recent years. But with this investment we've made as a council and as a community in restaffing that, we're building that capacity. And so a lot of the work that the committee was doing was kind of also stalled out. But as a group, they're passionate, and they bring a diversity of skills. And this is the three areas that they really felt that they could dig into and contribute to. So the way this group has functioned to date in setting their work plan is their work comes to them kind of in three directions. Items that they recommend, items that council recommends, or items that administration recommends. So these are kind of the three areas that the group wanted to focus on.
Thank you. What other questions? Councillor Reed?
Yeah, I'm just curious about a couple of things. So the community connectivity gap analysis, how is that different than the community survey?
So the gap analysis itself is specific to the parks and pathway, like that connectivity between our parks, our communities. The individual committee members would be sectioned off into areas of the community where they would specifically walk our pathways and our trail systems and just identify where there may or may not be gaps or areas that could use some specific attention.
And with this, you called it reframing, and I like that idea in terms of that, and that feeds the recreational master plan. What resources from the town will they need to be able to accomplish these three goals?
So that was obviously absolutely something that was taken into consideration, was what is actually the capacity of the organization as well. Not wanting to frustrate the committee members themselves of getting work going and then not having the support that they would need. So most of these would be quite minimal. That was one of the conversations we had, was this can't be, these can't be make-work project plans. It has to be actually the reverse of that. And so the committee will be very involved in actually undertaking the work. Primarily, it's going to be, certainly for the community connectivity gap analysis, it'll be some mapping support. And then, as I said, from the community survey perspective, that will obviously need some support from communications, which is why it's a bit lower on the priority on let's get the rest of the pieces in play, make sure that communications has the capacity to support something like that in a way that's meaningful enough that it will actually be data that the consultant can rely upon to feed into that recreation master plan and then go from there. So the goal was to have it be meaningful in a way that actually offsets some of the capacity challenges we have as an organization and really taking advantage of the passion of the committee members that we have.
Yeah, and I'm glad you clarified that it's not a work, a make-work project for the town and administration based on somebody else's ideas, but that there actually is a recognition that this is, they are going to have to carry the load. So how will they set, like, who will set the priorities and the timelines? They will do that themselves? And the town input to that is who? Would that be the new position or...?
Yeah, so currently, we're in that bit of a transition. So the committee meeting actually for this month was supposed to be this evening, and we decided to obviously not reschedule that, understanding that this was coming forward to council tonight. Mr. Hamm, our new Director of Community Services, has just come on board. And so really want to get him involved and introduced to the committee. And then from there, yeah, the timeline will be established. We need to, Mr. Hamm and I met today and talked about the master plan that has to be done. So what we'll need to do is develop the timeline for that and then work backwards for when we know that we're going to need the data that would be coming out of some of this work. And then work with the committee to determine what's achievable or not, obviously, whether dependent, obviously, as well with some of the outdoor stuff that this will incorporate.
So will the town have some input to what the outcomes, like, what the perceived outcomes would be and then how it's managed? So for example, if park and pathways, if it, committee members are... So for example, if park and pathways, if it committee members are, I wouldn't say harassing, but canvassing people on the pass. They would, are they representing the town in doing so or are they representing themselves or how is that played out?
So in this instance, as appointed members to a council committee, they would be representative of the town. So it will be the town, um, obviously the Director of Community Services and myself determining what those conversations would look like and what the outputs are that we're looking for. In conjunction with the committee members as well. Um, they want this to be meaningful work, they want it to resonate with the community. Um, they are ambassadors for us out and about in the community and so it is an opportunity to have those conversations as well. Um, so that they can champion the things that the town's trying to accomplish, um, not just with the Community Services Section, but as a whole. Um, and so I see it as an opportunity for both sides to really gain some traction there.
Right, yeah, and having sat on that committee last year, right, these are really good ambassadors of the town, unless it's changed. Some of the membership, but they, the ones that were on there were clearly uh committed to the to this ambassador role. And I like I like that term, so thank you.
Council Wilson?
Thank you, I just had a question for Councilor McFadden uh in regards to when we were talking about the. The Parks and Rec Committee itself and and our hope that it might be a conduit for all the different sports groups to come together and try and balance needs. And figure out, you know, what our what our top priorities might be. In in the past, I I I'm curious, has it been that, have we have we achieved that? And and by the way, thanks for sitting on it and all the passion you bring to it, I appreciate what you do there. I just I'm kind of in the dark on how well is it functioning in that capacity right now and how could we improve it?
Um, well, when it first started and it was and a lot of the work that was doing. When it first started and a lot of the work that was doing in supporting the uh Horse Creek Sport, we had a delegation day. And so there was a lot of engagement through that that was valuable. But then uh through COVID and the restructuring, a lot of, this was an area as a municipality that got stalled stalled out, including the work of the committee. Um, and so they're they're passionate and eager to tangibly engage again. Um, and so this is one of the areas that they identified or we identified is to have those community partnership discussions. So one of the groups, we have a rep from the Sports for Life Group, you know, how can we engage that group? Um, to make sure that we have instead of the community operating in silos, to how do we bring everybody to a table and leverage the strengths? Um, to then build out towards the uh recreational master plan. So it's it's kind of re-energizing that idea and creating that table space again. So we've got some really good uh people on there that have experience in kind of this partnership development um that want to do this. And to Alex's question, um, that was one of the. The items we were really clear with the committee that anything we came up with as a work plan. Um, this isn't you directing municipal resources. This is identify a gap, find the solution, and then we're going to have to be the doers of the work um supported by the municipality. But we were very clear that uh the committee was going to be carrying the the work of this. And so I see these kind of as um three different range plans. The um, the gap analysis, we've got different work walking groups, that one can be people getting out and understanding their landscape and sharing that one. That one they can jump on right away. Um, how we get around to the partnership discussions, that's going to take a little bit of a planning about what we want to do. And then, you know, thinking as we go into summer. And then uh case the communications insights, again, working with our new manager. You know, what are the questions? When we were brainstorming, it was really around identifying, you know, what do we as residents love about Cochrane? And then where are the improvements? So that we're creating that knowledge to feed into the plan. And so we were very clear that uh committee members, you're going to be doers and anything we're doing is going to feed into this overall plan.
Okay, great, thank you. I asked asking not as a not as a criticism in any way, it's more of a how can we help if there is a way to help? Um, have have we seen, heard from most of our larger recreation groups, do you feel like, over the lifetime of the committee? So that does the committee have a pretty good idea of what a balanced approach to Cochrane Recreation would be?
Well, it's remember that the delegation group conversations were around the Horse Creek group. We do have um. Uh, representation from the school boards, the IAG grounds, and of course the Spray Lakes Rep Board has a a rep on there as well. So they are all at the table, um, and the hope is, and they all do have an opportunity to report. So um, there is a, that conversation does happen. But um, I think to do a thorough analysis of every opportunity, um, that's going to be some, you know, dedicated resources coming out of the work. Of the uh Recreation Master Plan, that'll take some dedicated planning resources and some dedicated community outreach to do that. But this is a first step.
Great. And uh fin- finally, when when group sports groups come to me as they do from time to time, is our uh roundtables our 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 best plan? When we hear about um needs and uh say the baseball community, is it best to send them to the Parks and Rec Board? Is that kind of the the voice for for them to bring those concerns or is it better for us to operate individually as counselors to try to?
Well, I think, well, yeah, don't send them to me, my inbox is as big as yours.
Sure.
Um, I think we just need to keep working, like, we're going to have our new manager in place. And I think that's where we should start, you know, bringing these conversations together. There's this, these are the three things the committee is going to do.
So if I could augment the conversation that's going on, in addition to the Director of Community Services, who has now started, who I would suggest would be a good point of contact. He will be reaching out to all of those sports groups and all of those interest groups in the community over time, obviously that takes a little while. The other thing that we have done, um, which was discussed during budget, was we split the Parks and Open Spaces Coordinator position into two. So we now have someone dedicated to that Parks and Open Spaces liaison position. As opposed to trying to divide their time between the day-to-day operation and being a conduit for those sports and user groups. Um, so Angie Bashaw is in that position and she is another um essential resource for the community as well. And I think um when we're talking about the opportunity to bring those groups together, it's exactly that. It's having the conversations, whether it's with minor ball or pickleball, um, to both of those groups um I've met with over the last probably month. Um, and then there's also um groups like Bike Cochrane, who have done an extensive amount of work in gathering data that are willing to share all of that. So that gap analysis, the community connectivity, um, the updates that we've done, um, that you're going to find out this evening. With the Transit um Report, we've updated that portfolio and that job description to be a community um connectivity advisor, not just transit coordinator. Um, and all of these things are being pulled in under the umbrella of Community Services. So I think it's going to organically address some of the gaps that the community's been feeling, just as we start to fill up these positions. And then in the future, when we do add a manager of parks, um, there will be yet another resource. Um, but right now, we're building the foundation and those first stepping stones. Um, and I see the opportunity for these partnership discussions to really help address and leverage some of the passion that we do have in the community with those groups. That have felt a little bit like they've been unheard and have been operating in their own silos without any conduit to connect with one another or the town.
Okay, thank you. I I'm I'm still maybe as others around the table are still feeling out what the format of committee of the whole is. And it when we when we're gathering information, is this the appropriate way to do it? And yeah, I'm just glad to get an update on that and thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Council Pedeco.
Yeah, this might be kind of leading in that way too. Um, I was curious and maybe this is, the committee's not necessarily doing this, but maybe this is a path forward. But how the committee works in conjunction with the town and how their opinions may help to influence decisions such as rates uh for fields. Uh, as well as user ability ability or frustration with the ability to not use the fields, as well as some of the amenities coming to new communities. Um, we've obviously seen some conversation out there with ranks coming to certain communities, not other communities. And so I'm just curious whether or not the actual committee has any sort of say or any sort of influence over any of those things? Or if that's something that maybe we could look at uh coming up with down the road?
Yeah, well, for my rounds at this point, that if that's something that the council wants the committee to to carry the the work on. Then that would have to be directed to the committee. Um, it could be something, just thinking of your questions, that we build into either the uh, that community survey. Or as the, you know, a formal part of that recreational master plan, um, in identifying what's working well and and where the gaps are. So I I think I understand where you're coming from. Um, but yeah, if there's anything specific that you want the committee to do beyond those three things, um, it does need to be directed so they can add to it. And then just remember that these are volunteer members meeting three hours a month and some volunteer hours to do some other things. So we should just be careful about um. What the roles are, right? So some of these might fit appropriately with staff and other areas where it's that community engagement, determining priorities. Um, the ambassadorship, where they best fit. So I I think I understand where your questions are, um, just how to answer them, it might not be with the committee structure.
Yeah, fair enough, thank you. Yeah, and I would suggest too that some of those frustrations and some of what people are seeing has been the fact that there has been a gap in resources directed to. Uh, making those decisions and facilitating those conversations in a meaningful way. Um, and so I believe you will see um immediate improvement in how that actually um carries itself out throughout the course of the next year. Um, quite simply, just with the team that we have built right now. Um, because of the changes that we've made to some of the job scope, um, and some of the people we have and some of the resources we have, as well as the addition of that director. Um, there's going to be a little bit more of a thoughtful planned out approach to how these things come online. Outdoor ranks is always interesting because some of those were developer-driven on their own parcels, so it wasn't a town project. But the ability to communicate that, the ability to have a plan and have the community understand where they go, how they get the information, who they can have the conversation with. That in and of itself will probably alleviate a lot of the confusion and frustration that people might be feeling.
Yeah, and and hopefully as maybe COVID is going on, you know, disappearing slightly from just like the public engagement point of view. That perhaps council can find a way to help um maybe with some of that information and in doing our own public engagement. And being back out there and and kind of on pathways or at sports fields and kind of asking some of the people's frustrations. So that we're not necessarily dumping this all on a min, certainly not dumping it on a volunteer board. But perhaps taking control as counselors to find out some of that information and then reeling it back um so that you can find some solutions for us.
Absolutely, I think we're at a very interesting time and some of the timing is actually going to work in our favor. Because as we're reinvigorating Community Services and that department in our organization, we're also coming out of COVID where a lot of people are looking for the opportunity to reconnect. And reconnect with who we are as a community. And so I think just leveraging some of that excitement and passion that's going to be there. Um, the timing of all of this is really just falling into place um from my perspective.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Uh, yeah, just sorry, just for again figuring out how the committee of the whole section works. And I should probably know the answer to this one. So we we brought this to council for your input. Um, and to get direction, because without council's direction, the committee isn't really authorized to do anything. So the next steps on this, we're getting like kind of a general nods consensus tonight. Then does this come officially back to council at the next meeting to give formal direction or is this sufficient?
So I think there's been a little bit of um variation in how that's been handled uh historically um by the town and by the committees. It is my um interpretation that committee work plans should be coming to council for endorsement. Um, so while this is a bit of a information sharing conversation, it is my recommendation that it comes back to formal council meeting for council to endorse the work that the committee would be undertaking, yes. Because as I said, it is a committee of council, so they are representing you when they're out there um undertaking these work plans.
Okay, yeah, okay, so then I did understand it. So then we're going to see this then come back the next council meeting?
That would be correct.
And then the committee will be relieved to have clear direction and um, yeah, they're they're eager to to get out and do things. And they take my meeting cancellations in good form, but they are um, they volunteered to make a difference and they want to get going, so. Anyway, thank you for the support for the process, Stacy, I really appreciate it. And um, I think the committee is going to deliver some really great things for us.
Great, Mayor Janum?
I'm going to make a motion.
Not allowed.
No, I wasn't. Uh, I was going to say that I appreciate the direction of the committee and I do support the three projects that they've identified. So I could maybe save that for the next meeting. But um, question came to me from somebody in the public, I think last week, it is Tuesday, so yes, last week. About the ranch master plan and I think I knew the answer and I don't see it identified and I I I support it given the presentation tonight. But just wonder where that lands in the hierarchy of things.
Right, so through the budget, um, you may recall as we start having this conversation that we talked about that there was um money set aside for master plans specific to Mitford Park. And the Historic Ranch, as well as there was a previous project about a Recreation Master Plan that I think was linked a little bit to um. Recreation overall as far as facilities, not necessarily um a master plan specific. The intention is to pull the those funding dollars together to formulate an overall Recreation Master Plan as opposed to one-offing for the individual locations.
Right.
Um, and so that is the funding that we are looking at, because it will speak to um the Historic Ranch, it will speak to Mitford Park. Um, it will speak to all of those pieces.
Excellent, I'm glad I asked for clarity because it, so it's happening, but within the the master plan.
That's fair.
Awesome, okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no others, my last comments were, I remember putting the funds in that we did for the ranch, but we didn't call it a master plan. It was fairly minimal, I think, the number of dollars that we put in, so I like to see it as a big project, I think that's a great way to go. And in general, I like um how you're headed down this road and it'll be a great initiation for the new Community Services Department.
Absolutely.
But thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah. So now we're on five B, if um Mr. LaFlesch could come forward. Colt Service Update.
Come on, thank you, Lee, for pulling up. Good evening, I'll be providing a service update for the first two years of Colt Service. First, I'll provide a general service update, explain some of the impact of COVID nineteen, provide a comparison for year one and two, discuss our operational budget. Um, discuss one of the ways we're trying to address the high rate of failed searches during during school blessing hours. And then move to local regional service integration and finally the road ahead for Colt. So we had our benches uh all installed by the end of the fall of last year. Uh, very excited to share that they also let within the first week. So we are looking at an expansion of more bench locations in the spring and summer of twenty twenty two. As well as looking at expanding advertising on Colt buses to uh actually do a bit of the rear side of the bus. It's had just a bit more revenue there. Also wanted to give a shout out to the FCSS team, uh, they launched a Cochrane Connect Card, which allows for uh people to receive subsidies if they're part of a low-income household. Uh, they were able to integrate with the Colt Service to provide that for our books of ten passes. And they also worked with Roll eScooters to uh find a way to reduce uh costs for those low-income households again. Another key thing was we had lots of large group bookings, so whether it was youth groups, uh senior living facilities, day homes. And we were doing a lot of these bookings manually, like calling me, settling, setting it all up. Uh, we were able to actually make a larger group booking through the app now, so that these groups can uh book with a larger capacity. Have a bit more boarding time, so it's not a rush to get on in a minute. And um also for the senior living facilities, we're able to actually add more stop locations to give them a bit more door-to-door service. And just to offer a higher level of service for those residents. Also, we've been working with the Stony Nakota Nation, they have some funding from the federal government for regional transportation. Uh, so we've been supporting them uh any way we can to really get them something that they can implement very soon. They're actually looking at as soon as uh next month. It's a four-year pilot that integrates into Cochrane and our Transit Hub parking lot, uh connecting from Morley and Cochrane. And we're going to look at, uh, hopefully that service will be successful and it'll be a really great addition to our region. We've also been part of uh many studies, so we worked with a PhD from the University of Toronto on his thesis for the State of Demand Response of Transit in Canada. We're currently working with the University of Calgary, several professors on assessing the equity performance of on-demand transit systems. So that'll actually help provide us some recommendations for a more equitable service with Colt. Um, we're also working with the Canadian Urban Transit Association or QDA, as well as MetroLinks, as they create an on-demand toolkit. This will explain to municipalities across Canada what is on-demand. Uh, it'll really help explain a lot of the nuances of how different communities are doing it differently. And also help us as an industry actually start to standardize on-demand, so that we're using the same metrics and we can have more collaboration that way. We're also very lucky to be a part of uh a free service offered from Infrastructure Canada for the Future Cities Canada. Uh, they offer an advisory service, we brought forward our local regional service integration, uh and they gave us an industry expert. So working with Andrew Salzberg, he is a, he studied at McGill, Harvard, he's worked for Uber, Transit App, just to name a few places. Uh, very knowledgeable in the uh transit industry space, so a lot of it is just talking about Colt as well as our plan of local regional service integration. Helping validate some of the things we're doing, pushing or pointing us in the right direction. And they'll be providing a report uh in the next few weeks. So that was just a great add to, again, have someone like that come in and and support. In terms of uh the impact of COVID nineteen, again, looking after March fourteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, we see uh drops in ridership, thirty-nine percent for our weekday passenger count and then down by thirty-five percent for Saturdays. Uh, at the real maximum drop we saw was seventy three percent, fairly standard across the industry. Where we've been quite lucky is uh how quickly we rebounded and seeing ridership come back up, conventional services haven't seen that speed. Uh, we saw a drop in shared ridership, this was to be expected though, especially given uh we reduced our capacity of our buses just recently. Uh, moved those back to max capacity, uh passenger per vehicle hour also. We saw a drop there, but again, lower ridership, we provided a little bit more buses on the road to really help uh essential service workers relying on transit. Uh, and then we had an improvement on on time performance. Uh, when we look over the first two years of Colt, you can really see um that first drop is where we had a switch to paid fares. Um, but you do see that come back up in February, then we really see the impact of COVID. Uh, you can really see the ups and flows as we go through different waves of uh COVID. Um, one thing is we we have seen days where we get back to pre-COVID numbers, but then the next day we can see down by fifty percent, so it's very inconsistent. Uh, makes it very challenging when we're trying to plan the service, uh. Uh, we're at the point now it's hard to take buses off the road because the next day you you need to have them back and we're dealing with driver shortages. Um, that's across North America in the transit industry is driver shortages, so we're really trying to. Provide a consistent uh schedule for our drivers as well. Um, you can also see for Saturdays, it really does follow the same trend uh for ridership as our our weekdays. When we look at year one and two, um what we see is a a reduction in in ridership in year two. This is largely due to, again, we almost have six months of pre-COVID in year one, uh year two is really all COVID. Um, and just to give you uh for to date where we are for ridership, we're at roughly eighty thousand passengers, so. Great to see that, we did see a reduction in uh children and wheelchair passengers. Um, not surprising again with a lot of things closing down, uh less activities, again. We, from where we were pre-COVID with that six months, um bicycles, you'll notice a significant increase there. That's largely due to a lot of the education work we did, we were at the rec center for farmers markets, we also worked with Bike Cochran. On a video really explaining how to use the bike rack, so that's again another thing we're going to focus on with multimodal transit. Um, improvements on registered users and ride ratings still heading in the right direction, so improving it at five stars to four point eight. Um, when we look at booking, not much changes here, but just something to note, so when we have people who are booking trips, we see sixty percent are the same day. Um, this is good to see, especially we designed the service to really, again, we have that two days plus, it goes up to seven days. We designed the service for riders by need, so people who can, they have an important appointment, they book it, we build the trips around the people who booked first. But we're still seeing a lot of people who are more traditionally riders by choice, I'm going for lunch or hey, my car is not working today because it's minus thirty something, I'm going to hop on Colt. Um, so that is where we want to see that number, again, people are able to book on the same day, again, it's something we're always work on improving. Uh, again, and we look at occupied time, so this is where uh the bus is traveling, so you can see roughly uh three quarters of the time. It is occupied versus a quarter, roughly a quarter of the time uh empty, so again, another metric we're we're going to definitely work on improving, but not looking too bad. When we look at uh trip times, so this is riding Colt, we see an improvement, again, this could be. Likely due to reduction in congestion as we moved into COVID, but again, something we're going to work on, uh roughly fourteen minutes. Shared ride percentage, that improved as well, a lot of that's through the system learning and and doing a better job at creating shared rides. Um, on on time performance improved as well. And then daily no shows, this is where we have a bus shows up and someone doesn't show up to the trip they booked. Uh, when we first launched, we didn't see this issue till about month, uh three or four, and then it became very rampant. Uh, we were doing a a very manual system, tracking who was no showing and then trying to, again, we'd contact them. Uh, trying to educate them on this and uh even have to have suspensions. We've now moved to an automated system where it just tracks users with a higher rate of no shows and late cancellations. And it throttles their account down to just two bookings, so they can book a return trip. Um, this has really helped uh create that change in behavior, again, when we contacted users who were doing no shows, it was a lot of young residents who just. You know what I wasn't thinking, uh I'm sorry, and with that, we actually removed the throttle or the suspension. It's mainly just getting people to acknowledge that, hey, by not showing up, I'm taking away service or I'm not utilizing the service properly. Because we offer a cash service, we can't really do a penalty for that, that's the challenge we have, that. A fully online service could just charge every person for every missed trip, we don't do that with ours. We also have daily users with uh failed searches, so they experience a failed search when they try. Again, a lot of this incorporates that first uh three months when it's free service, we were short on a bus as we were borrowing from Calgary. Um, we were able to take that down quite a bit. Um, key things, we're still seeing a lot of failed searches during during the school busing hour, that's where the majority of it is. Um, and key things we're actually seeing, like we've been able to drop it by more than half, however, as we come out of COVID, we see that demand come up. We're going to need to make some uh adjustments, the local regional service integration is going to help with that, but we may need to look at adding more capacity to meet that higher level of demand. I mean, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one, we're a ten percent increase in our population, so again, we'll have to factor that in. Uh, top stop locations, uh not very surprising, we have a lot of downtown locations, the high schools, uh SLS Family Sports Center. One of our senior living facilities Hawthorne or formerly Points West Living, uh we also have. Um, a lot of different little commercial areas in the community, so Heartland One is now turning to Heartland Six where the uh Tim Hortons and Petro is. Uh, as well as the Transit Hub parking lot, and then we have some of our more distant communities, you'll actually notice. When we look here, here's a video, just a time lapse, you'll really see the speed slow down as we hit COVID. Um, and you'll notice that we see a lot of usage in the core, the rec center, the high schools, as well as our more distant communities. When we look at how fare payments were made, we do have two free periods, one was when we first launched the service, building up that uh. Uh, getting people to try it, get out, it was part of the launch for the first three months, then we had COVID, we offered four months to really help those essential service workers. Utilize the transit service, we did have the savings from our operational savings. Um, one key thing to look at is um what we're trying to do is reduce the amount of cash that we're taking in, pushing people more to those blue strands at the top. Which are our mobile purchases, um so that's a key thing we're looking at doing again, it's a bit more efficient, easier to track. Uh, less work on our end and and Southland as our operator. And uh we're also looking at monthly mobile passes, so that allowed another online service. When we look at the budget, this is from twenty twenty, we do have that significant operational saving, so when COVID hit. We were very fortunate to have an on demand service where we could just reduce the number of vehicles on the road to match that lower level of demand. That's where we have a hundred and fifty eight thousand of operational savings, uh in revenue, fifty one thousand. This actually helped us come in twenty two percent under the the target we had for six hundred thousand net budget. When we look at twenty twenty one, still some operational savings, uh we did have an increase in uh revenue as well, this had the first full year of advertising services on the bus. Uh, we don't have the bench revenue coming in until twenty twenty two, so that'll add some more revenue there. And what we have here is coming in five percent, it's been updated from the report, it says four, just FYI. This is now getting to, this was an issue we noticed very early on, it was uh, we have. Students in Cochran who have opted to use Colt instead of the school busing route, Colt's very affordable at twenty five dollars a month for a student. When you saw that average time of fourteen minutes per trip, uh very quick. And um what we're seeing is they're opting to use that instead of Colt. Again, we have over a hundred and twenty school buses in Cochran, uh there's a reason for that, about a third of our population is under eighteen, we have eight Colt buses. We only run three to four during peak hours, so we really can't jump in and fill that gap. You may hear, oh, well, Calgary and some of the larger municipalities offer transit for school busing, they are getting paid by the school boards for that. We, again, we don't, we don't have the ability to fill in that need. Um, a big key thing is when we have someone, let's say from Glen Eagles, uh let's say Sunset and Fireside all booking. To let's say the tri schools, that can tie up our buses for almost a full hour, as the system tries and it's actually learned. It can only book for a thirty minute trip, it's going to be longer than that, so it'll only fit that one person on. It'll it'll still do the trip, but it excludes other riders, so it becomes almost an exclusive form of transportation for these students. Um, so what we're looking at is not completely getting rid of transit for the school stops, is restricting the stops as a drop off. For the school stops on the map, twenty minutes before the buses arrive and ten minutes after the start bell, roughly forty minutes. And the same in the PM, like so pickups in the afternoon from these stops, ten minutes before the. The end bell and then twenty minutes before the buses or after buses leave, so it really creates a time that students can use Colt. If they're uh coming to school early for a practice or they're leaving midday or they're leaving in the afternoon. But it's just keeping our buses from going into very congested areas. Uh, and and really having this high rate of failed searches for residents who can't use school busing and they're relying on Colt too during these peak hours. So what we're also looking at doing again for the yellow stops, again, the tri schools are very difficult to service with over forty buses there, all the. Re- uh parents who are going in there as well during that school busing time. But we are looking at having PM uh pickups where you can get dropped off in non residential areas, so not being redundant with school busing. This allows them to go uh to after school programs, the rec center, uh and then even for staff, we have staff that requires. Uh, Colt to get to work and they work at the schools, we can actually whitelist their account to allow them to book during these periods. Again, we're going to monitor it, it's very, again, most school staff come in before or after, or not quite at the exact same time as the school buses. And again, we we noticed this problem in early twenty twenty, the press pause with COVID nineteen, students coming in and out of school. Um, all really the challenges everybody was facing with that, it didn't seem like an appropriate time, but we're now planning to roll this change out. In the fall of twenty twenty two, so giving people some time to make some adjustments, again, understand how this impacts them. But we're really at a point where we have to balance service level, service cost. Now moving to the local regional service integration, this is in partner with Southland on its service. Uh, again, looking at having Colt buses connect to the Transit Hub where a regional bus is waiting to take people into the Calgary area and even Banff, Canmore. Uh, so we're looking at roughly uh three trips in the morning and three in the afternoon from the hub to the Brentwood LRT station in the University of Calgary. Also looking at maybe a midday trip with a Colt bus. Uh, and this is on weekdays, looking at two in the morning and two in the afternoon from the hub to Satan downtown Calgary. And then potentially uh Banff and Canmore in the summer months, and this is again bidirectional travel, so people from Calgary can also come to Cochran, connect into the system. The way we're looking at doing this is through a P three, uh public private partnership with Southland Transportation. And what we'd be looking at is, again, they'll be funding eighteen hours uh on our weekdays, so roughly uh three buses for three hours in the morning and afternoon. And those will connect into the hub and this will help address some of our actual demand we see during peak hours as well. Because if we have more buses than we need, we can actually move them elsewhere, that's another key thing that we can do. Uh, we're also looking at a fare integration, again, as a resident, if you're traveling. Uh, to Calgary, you just buy the regional pass and you're able to get on the Colt bus during those regional hours, connect to the hub and get on that regional bus. Again, it's meant to be more seamless for the resident, much easier than buying two passes and having to deal with that. And that's part of the Southland covering our operating costs, adding roughly forty five percent more hours to our weekday than we currently have. Uh, what we looked at originally was, hey, let's just jump right to fixed route, we've done a lot of modeling now and we're seeing that we actually get a higher passenger per vehicle hour. When we look at just adding on demand, more on demand buses, as you add an on demand bus, it's not a linear. Growth in ridership is actually exponential as there's higher chances for ride sharing, better routing. So we're better to start with that, it's a lot more flexible, especially as we come out of COVID nineteen. As we start to see demand patterns, we can look at dynamic routes first, so these are ones that they have certain stops they go to, but they still only go where they're requested. That still allows us to have all that data, we can also look at on demand transfers to a north and south zone with an overlap in the downtown core. This is a reduction in service level as we add transfers, and when we're looking at the modeling, it wasn't giving the results we necessarily want. Something we're going to continue to explore, but we're more leaning towards this phased approach, more on demand buses, dynamic routes. And then when it's warranted, looking at fixed routes, which are a lot more um rigid, as well as we lose a lot more data. As we're only really, we can put on automated passenger counters, but we're not seeing the same understanding of where did the actual person book. Now, just other key updates for the road ahead for Colt, we're looking at, again, mobile monthly passes, so the ability to just buy it through the app. Have some credits that you're drawing down and that expire at the end of the month, looking at tap payment onboard, so again, reducing that cash, you can come in and tap, pay the two fifty with a credit card. Um, we've also, again, we launched E scooters uh in August of last year, looking at having those come back, potentially e bikes as well. And we're looking at ways to integrate data, so we can actually see. All di- our transit data with micro mobility data to have a better understanding, even we can look at pathway data and really integrate how people are getting around Cochran. There's also lots of funding opportunities coming up, we have zero emission buses. As well as rural transit solutions, we put in expressions of interest on, as well as um. Uh, there's the Active Transportation Fund uh for pathways, and then we're also looking at uh. A potentially uh operational funding for transit, which is relatively new, again, it's a it's a ways away in twenty twenty six, but definitely grabbing at all those opportunities. Uh, and lastly, really key thing we're hearing from residents and riders is they're looking for more service hours, again. Can we have a later Saturday that doesn't end at three PM, can we go all the way to to eight or nine? Uh, late Saturday, Friday night, uh adding a Sunday service and even uh later in the evening to something like ten PM. So again, just letting people know that as we come out of COVID. We have some residents who are really expressing a need for more service, more ways to get around the community using Colt. Uh, with that, I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Great, lots of exciting changes coming forward, I have a few questions, but I'll wait till the end, um councillor Fadaco.
Is going to give us a lowdown on a whole bunch of information on transit, it's going to be you. Um, a couple of questions and maybe just a couple of comments, I think um maybe one set, one thing to possibly consider is like a ride safety for young teens. Um, as a parent with young teenagers in the house, my kids often ask me if they can take the Colt down to somewhere and. I will have to say that even as a parent, sometimes I'm a little nervous, so maybe an awareness day for uh our preteens or young teenagers would be a good thing. Um, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions, on the on the nonprofit groups or the large groups that are booking, is there a nonprofit rate? Um, or uh, you know, a discount rate for some of those groups that might be looking for large bookings?
Not currently, what we do is we require them to purchase a fare. Um, we are looking at uh potentially a policy that would allow for events, we get a lot of requests and it, again, something more standard than. Just decisions, again, we we do seek out approval from leadership to to do those, but maybe an actual policy that has a lot more clear. Uh, understanding on who can get a subsidized rate, is it a town event and it's free, we've done that before when we first launched, again, COVID hit. And events kind of went out the window as far as requiring transportation, so coming out of COVID, that's something we could definitely explore.
I mean, I kind of, I kind of feel for you, I I grew up in Shear Park and years ago, like back in probably ninety two, ninety one. Uh, they had an on demand system, it was dial the bus, right, and then it worked, it worked well, right, so I understand kind of the. The complex area that we're in, we're not really big, but we're not really small, and so we need to try to find areas to fit everybody in, and so I do agree, maybe a pilot. On a, like a late Friday night service or Saturday, it might be a good thing as well. Um, that's something that I always hear is that the the bus is not running necessarily when people necessarily want to book it. Um, advertising, not necessarily bus bench advertising, but actual physical advertising on the bus. There might wanna, you might want to look at more options for businesses, um just to. Just to fill those advertising needs, right, if if things are more affordable, maybe you have more businesses that want to. Want to choose advertising on the bus, um. I'm just trying to read my notes here, uh and then the biggest thing that I've always heard o- o- over the last sort of while is just frustration with trying to book, right, so people can book there. But then they end up in a place wherever they're going and they can't seem to ever get back, right, so. Um, whatever we need to do, I think, to try to look at um. How those kind of rides are handled is something that uh that would be good, and then I think if anything, it's just, it's just more awareness that the bus is here and and you're right, because of COVID, probably. So many people have avoided necessarily looking at public transportation. Um, but maybe as we move out, this is a big awareness to kind of reinvigorate that. Um, and maybe it starts with us, right, as council to try to push that out and and get some awareness and some excitement that we have this great service here in our community. Um, and how can we better leverage it so that we get more people riding? And that's it, thanks for the update.
Great, councillor Reed.
Thanks, Stephen, that was really informative as usual. Um, in preparation for your presentation, I went back, I've kind of looked at some of the earlier, your earlier presentations, which were all. Um in preparation for your presentation, I went back, I've kind of looked at some of the earlier, your earlier presentations, which were all all very informative. But one of the very first ones was that Colt would not compete with the, with the school bus system, is what you had said. And um and and obviously it is competing. And I don't think it should, to be honest. Um in my neighborhood, uh actually Colt's got a bit of a bad rap because they've been picking up a a high school student and taking her down by herself. Everybody in the community has seen that. One student every morning get on the bus. And uh and so at least in my community, that issue has become a concern and I, you know, I would think you know, my suggestion would be was that we should not compete with the school bus service. They should do their own thing and we should not be picking up those um those students. They should be other, outside of those kind of regular hours or school hours, I have no problem with. But I think it takes it away from, from what might be regular customers. That would be my first comment. The second one was about the regional service. You didn't mention when that was going to start. Is that connected to the station and its completion or?
Not necessarily. It it's more connected to the return to uh school and work of uh people going into Calgary. We're currently running an interim regional service. Again, Southland's covering the cost. They're using a Colt bus. We tried it with a minimum number of passengers. It was very hard for people to get onboard with committing to something when we're saying every month we need this many people. And they're saying, well, I don't, I either have to decide to get a car, insure a car. I I need you to commit, so that's where Southland stepped in and said, we'll take the risk on this one. Uh if it's not meeting those twelve passengers, uh we'll continue to run it. And again, that was right before a COVID nineteen wave hit and uh we went back into a lockdown and Southland held true to that. And was uh again, traveling with a pretty low number of passengers for that month. And then again, it it's recovering, we're seeing an increase, so I think we're getting very close. Um the fact that we're not going to a more rigid fixed route service allows us to be very agile and, hey, we can launch this thing and add some more buses to the road, see how it works and adjust. So again, it it's really a a matter of, again, finalizing a contract with them as well as um their turn to school and work. Uh just seeing people return that. And it does look like that's quite promising. Uh I I've I've said many times, I think we're out of this, but I I think it's that this time for real. As an optimist.
Is is there a regional service right now that that this would compete with or is it one of the same?
It's one in the same. So really, the Onnit service was uh put on a hiatus because again, they were running these large regional buses around the community. Uh COVID hit, they did a park and ride. Again, that fifty-five passenger coach bus was much too large to to justify that. Having residents reaching out to say, hey, I rely on this to get to work. Uh we moved to that, hey, we can work with Southland on it using a Colt bus. It's a lot smaller. And again, at that point, we had a minimum, so we were covering our costs. Uh and then it got to COVID again, we paused it. And then, I can't remember what wave that was, but at one point, we actually put a stop, I think from December to, I wanna say March. And then Southland committed to, we'll cover the operating costs for this. Um and once demand picks up to a point where the Colt bus is too small, we move back to the coach. And they're already planning for that.
Okay. What's the difference between a dynamic versus fixed service? I under- I think I understand what a fixed service is. And how do they, how do they gel with an on-demand? Like, how does all of that come together?
Yeah, so a di- uh a dynamic or deviated, uh dynamic's probably a better sounding one. Uh is really, you have a a select number of stops that a bus can go to, like we, on our on-demand, they can go to any of the predetermined stops. Some people are curb to curb, they can go to any location. Uh with a di- dynamic route is it will only go where it's requested. So we're still having people book. That is again, something we've heard. I just wanna get on a bus, very cost, uh much higher cost to get to that fixed route service where it's just running that thirty, forty minute loop all the time. These dynamic routes instead will serve as that, so you can, we give a bit more predictability that the bus is going by or could go by your house every thirty minutes um on these routes, but it's only going to where it's requested. So let's say there's a route that goes to the rec center, to uh Riverside and then to Fireside. If it's coming up to Fireside and it's ten, fifteen minutes before and it still has time, but no one requested the bus in Fireside, it brings those people to the hub uh to get them there sooner, so they can make a transfer or they get to that uh location quicker. So that's a a dynamic route, is rather than having a very Yeah, exactly.
How how do, could you have an on-demand dynamic at the same time?
It doesn't have to be one or the other. Fixed route is very challenging to do one or the other, because people are just hopping on and off. It's very hard to track what data you have. Again, there's there's systems to track fixed route data, automated passenger counters. But those don't necessarily gel uh with the on-demand or dynamic routing. Our software provider can do dynamic routes. Uh they can't do fixed routes very well. Even if we do what we call seeding, where we basically just book a trip at every single one, by having four routes that have uh even just twenty, uh it's a lot of calculating and and it runs into the kind of just spinning and then erroring out. So and that's across the industry. Talking to Andrew Salzberg, again, I was saying, are we just dealing with a a software provider who can't do this? And he's like, no, this is something they're struggling with, with uh uh across the industry.
Okay. And can I ask one more question? Actually, so did I understand to say that the net budget savings was six hundred thousand dollars?
No, no, that was the expected net budget. Um so again, the savings would be twenty-two percent or uh the difference between six hundred thousand to four seventy for twenty twenty and then roughly thirty thousand for uh twenty twenty-one.
Okay, good. Thanks for the clarity. Thanks for your presentation.
Great. Councillor McFadden.
Yeah, thank you, Devon. Excellent presentation as always and I always love your passion and enthusiasm for transit. Uh so at the beginning of your presentation, I think you'd highlighted um we're looking uh to support the Stoney Dakota with a regional connection. And um we're also moving ahead with integrating the regional connection to Calgary, which is great. Um will those two services have a chance to, are both of those gonna interact and engage? So is somebody from the Stoney Dakota Nation gonna be able to come uh to our hub and engage with the Calgary? And is it gonna be seamless, one pass? What does it look like?
Not necessarily one pass, but uh we are working. Again, they're actually contracting into Southland as well, which makes it a bit easier for us. Um at one point, they were reaching out to us of just, hey, can we just be an add-on? Fact that they had funding, it made more sense to have them have their own autonomy for their transit service, whether they want to go to Canmore. They're currently not. They're going to the casino is the first, they go west, but they have their autonomy for their service. But we're supporting them with, again, they have a stop that's attached to the same transit hub stop at the library. That's their current only stop. I've provided some recommendations if they wanted to go elsewhere into Cochrane, whether it's Walmart, No Frills, uh Dollarama, you name it, where they're they're seeing a lot of demand for that. Um but the the plan is for them to eventually integrate. They definitely want to have that connection to Calgary and vice versa. People from Calgary get all, get all the way out to uh uh Morley as well, or to Chiniqui Village, or to uh uh the casino. So it it should be all integrated is what we're looking at.
So the short answer is a work in progress.
A work in progress.
Perfect. Um yeah, and other than like really good news, um I I think we are super fortunate that we were using on-demand service when COVID hit, because it really did allow us to adapt our services to fit and save, save funds. Um and I think like everybody else, I I do hear kind of the grumps that it doesn't work. Um so I was talking to my daughter, who's fifteen, and she's like, well, I'm gonna try transit, but my friends say it never works. I was like, well, you know, keep trying and we'll see how it goes, but it clearly works, because she texted me to say that she successfully got home. So I think it's um, it's still a process, so we all need to um to learn how to use and adjust our expectations around. So but I think overall, it's a really great success story for Cochrane and I really um wanna thank you for your part in making that happen. Your creativity and ingenuity are highly valued, so thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Genon.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Devon, for the presentation. Um few questions and just maybe the first one I was, would build off of what councillor Reed was saying, competing with the school buses. I heard that you're contemplating actually putting a block so that that doesn't happen at all. You maybe just
That, yeah, that was definitely some, that was something we looked at very early on. Again, we didn't want to compete and we shouldn't. Uh we just can't. It it's just to take half the kids, I think ages, what was it, ten to fifteen, we need like eighty Colt buses. Uh cause again, we just can't manage that. So what we're actually looking at is a block on the school stops, all the ones you see here. Again, we haven't done the ones uh in, right in the center of Cochrane, because those are going to be stops that residents going to businesses are also going to be doing. Uh so it's not as big of impact. But we do see a large pattern of students relying on Colt. Again, it it's very affordable. It comes in cheaper than the uh the school busing cost. So we do have to look at, we can't compete, we can't be redundant. Cause as it pulls away from school busing, it actually puts more onto the people who are still using school busing. It becomes even more unfair. Uh so yes, we're looking at putting a block for that prior to the buses arriving. So again, the reason we want that is to give enough time that if someone's coming to school early and and there is no school busing, that's not competing. But again, we're trying to avoid our buses coming in during that very busy period where we have uh school buses, parents. And uh and we're we're just trying to reduce any redundancy with school busing. And even there's students who don't have access to school busing. It's very hard to hear and and you do want to help them, but again, these are routes that are the hardest to service. That's why Rockyview Schools hasn't. And then we're trying to do that with our transit service, which again excludes everybody else who may want to book that that same day of. The students booking that week in advance, securing those trips every day and really um taking that time very exclusively.
But this, thank you for that, but this will, you said
This will stop that, yeah, so this will, this will
But not till fall.
Not till fall. Again, we'll wait till a brand new school year. People have already adjusted to a certain system of getting to school. And uh with COVID, we're still not back to our peak ridership, so.
Yeah, well, great segue, cause that was gonna be my next question. We haven't actually had a full year of normal.
No, not even. Again, six months, uh almost of regular transit, we'd say.
Okay, um I appreciated the update on the advertising. I would think at the onset, we were always hoping to kind of phase that in over time. And I see that's exactly what's happening. Um I think councillor Fadaco had some, some comments about that. It was good. Um again, I think along the lines of bus benches, where you started your presentation, we also talked about um bus shelters. What is the next step in that progression?
So we have a, we secured a, awarded a proponent for, through an RFP process. Um we have one going at the, one or two shelters at the transit hub. I believe it's just one now. It's been decided it's on the um west end of the site. Um where the layby is. And then we're also looking at a shelter at XLS Family Sports Center, as well as the new Protective Services Building. Uh funded through Green Trip. We actually did get our Green Trip extended for till February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, which is great. It's the final one before they end the program. Uh but that'll allow us to install those shelters. Uh shelters are very challenging. They're not something that even advertising companies want to take on. They're very high cost. We, even though shelters we're choosing is very um monitored places, again, where people, we have people, we have a a lower chance of these shelters being broken. Uh cause it can be very expensive if you have constant vandalism. Calgary's experiencing that, so. Um we're being very strategic on where we put these shelters. Again, with the on-demand service, you can see where the bus is in real time. If you have a smartphone and you also get text messages if you do not. So you should have an idea if your bus is running late or or where it is in real time.
Okay, perfect. And before I forget, um and if it's not going to be there already, can we have the presentation on the portal? Yeah, okay. Everyone's like, mhm. No, I just think it's, it's it's a lot of information. I think it's good for us. I mean, I think we probably all get questions about Colt or um and wanna be able to respond. And I think this is a good way to keep up on that stuff. Um the regional service from the hub, um and I was going through all the questions from the survey that was attached to our present, or to our report. Um I think we need to highlight to people that the hub downtown is not where people are expected to park. Is there maybe part of the survey or part of the engagement that we do that? And maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but the intent is for people to take Colt from their home or wherever they are to the hub to then transfer to a regional connection.
Yes, again, park and ride for uh our traffic pattern for Cochrane, I looked at it very early on, is it's less conducive for a park and ride. Your traffic issue is in the afternoon. Most people, when they get in their car, it's very hard to get them out to park and then, and then ride, uh especially if we have a good Colt service that connects them to there. So uh the riders we have currently, the interim service is currently a park and ride at that uh transit hub. Uh usually utilizing the parking lot right now, but the idea is to, they've been asking for a shift. I want a a connection. I don't want to have to take my car, park it and then take that. So yeah, making sure, and that's where we're working with that Future Cities, is to make sure that whatever we do is very customer focused. That it it means those needs the best possible way um to get as many people on the service and using the local connection. So again, there's, there should be ample parking in that area, but again, how popular it is and we don't really want like a Tuscany or uh one of those park and rides like Crowfoot, I believe would be.
Well, yeah.
We're not looking for that, right?
Yeah, the point of my comment is that we don't wanna create a sea of cars down in our downtown core. We wanna create the opposite. But we have to educate people about that before the service starts. And I think some still believe that our transit hub is going to be where they come and park their car and take the bus from. So I think we have some work to do on that. Cause I keep hearing that over and over again, um and not from the same person. How many trips per year are we budgeting or anticipating?
For the local or for the regional?
Local, sorry. Yeah.
The local, we were aiming for around, again, it's really changed with COVID nineteen. I don't think I have that, all the slides I have, I don't have that one here.
You said eighty thousand
We've, we've done eighty thousand in the past uh two years and almost two and a half. So again, if we look back to what we did in the first these are full years from October seventh through October sixth, October seventh to October seven.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand. Again, that's a COVID year. Um significant drops in ridership. Uh but we were aiming for around a fifty thousand, marker forty-five for the first year, moving up to fifty. Um so again, coming out of COVID, we do want to head to that level. Some of our ridership projections did also anticipate an integration with the local regional service. So again, that will add a lot to ridership. Um but it's been delayed, right? So.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, again, thank you for the presentation. Like everybody said, very informative. Thank you.
Councillor Nagel.
Yeah, thanks. Um as everyone said, great presentation. I appreciate all the visualization tools you used. Um I'm, I wanna drill deeper into this conversation about the regional bus. Um like I think everybody is in agreement up here that we want eventually Cochrane to have like a shuttle where you get on and it takes you to the C train and any other primary stop in Calgary. That is the case, correct? So so with that in mind, if we're thinking we're gonna get people on Colt down to this primary hub where they're then gonna shuttle into Calgary, how many people can we actually move at peak using Colt?
Quite a few. So when we even look at um, so go, the capacity's twenty-one. The buses we're looking for regional, we're looking at Southland moving away from their current model of a very old coach bus that they took in from Northern Alberta or BC, and it's kind of spending the last of its life as an on-it bus to uh what we'd call an executive coach, so the thirty-five to forty passenger range. Um so we'd be looking to fill those. Again, a higher quality bus, uh we've put in for the zero emissions bus, um an application that would be a P three where we'd love to get something, we did have act funding before, active or Alberta Community Transit Fund. That was four million. We had to actually buy these regional buses, electric or hydrogen. Um that was taken out of a budget, but that's something we're still pursuing, to have a a really quality bus that represents Cochrane very well as it's coming in and out of Calgary is what we'd like. So those sizes of buses, buses with three to four Colt buses coming in, that should be able to uh support uh that size. Again, we're looking at up to six buses running during peak hours. And again, in the morning, we run three right now, four in the afternoon. It's a a fairly large increase, so.
So if we had like a a fifty-person shuttle leaving the hub and going into, say, Crowfoot or wherever, can we actually, i- if, assuming if everybody's commuter, I'm thinking everybody needs to be leaving their house between like six and seven. Um so can we actually use Colts to get fifty people from random locations in Cochrane onto a shuttle to leave at the same time? Cause I'm, I I feel like Colt can't actually achieve that.
So if we run into that challenge of like they're too dispersed, that's where we look at those dynamic routes. That's the idea of hey, we're only going to run, again, we've mapped out fixed routes. Those dynamic, and you can find those on the ridecolt.ca website under regional service. Um we can move to a dynamic route service that only runs to those stops. Those are roughly thirty minutes. And then people have to travel a little bit further to get to that stop. They were doing that with the Onnit service before. Again, it was a lot more of a, a a milk run. Again, you're in this large, older bus. It was spending thirty to forty-five minutes picking people up and then going into Calgary, and they were getting pretty good ridership on that. So we should be able to do, rather than having three buses run around and then take people in, we have a bus waiting. And we have actually two buses. So one is going to the transit hub, or one is going to Satan downtown Calgary, the other's going to Brentwood. So and we'll stagger those uh departure times. And it's not just the current schedule where you had, right now it's leaving at six thirty AM. That's it. And then coming back out of Calgary around four PM. Uh now you have multiple times. We're talking about a six thirty, a seven thirty or seven to the Brentwood. Uh a seven thirty or seven to the Brentwood LRT station, uh and then, so we've now opted to uh five trips in the morning. So the Colt bus is running around, they'll be able to start feeding into those buses, and we're we're looking at a. Larger quantity, and we're getting rid of the issue that we currently have of students using Colts instead of the school bus. That's a big drain on the system right now, because right now our buses are going to our most congested part, congested parts of town. A- and being stuck in that to to serve one or two students, right, so.
So so with the uh with the regional hub and transit, are we looking at, we're looking at something that's kind of a hybrid, it's not necessarily on-demand, it's like. If you're going to Calgary five days a week, be at your community bench at six fifteen.
Yeah, we, we're gonna start off with on-demand first, just because we don't know where that demand is going to be at first. But as we start hearing from people like, hey, I'm, or hey, I, we have this many people in River Songs, a very popular uh on-it stop or area for on-it right now. And so as Fireside, we already have a pretty natural route there, so we can look at doing that as a dynamic route to start off, but. We're not necessarily sure for places like West Valley, West Terrace, how far in do we go, so. When we add the more on, more on-demand buses, we assess and we can change, right, that's the real idea of this, is not jumping right to the fixed route. And locking ourselves in, uh we're gonna use the data, be a little bit more thoughtful, again, it does ask people to be a bit more patient. Um they're more understanding, especially when we were going through COVID, we were increasing or reducing vehicles, and then suddenly we'd have demand spike. We now have to add a driver back on, that's where we get a lot of the complaints too, is uh we're trying to match this changing demand of COVID, so. Uh when we go to regional, it should be a lot better, and we're even looking at timing the on-demand buses, so they actually come to the hub, so we do this, basically do. They can go anywhere, but they need to be back at the hub for, let's say, six thirty, thr- six thirty to be there for the six thirty-five departure. So they're all time transfers, really, does that make sense?
Yeah, um I think, I don't normally think, you know, the whole like build it and they will come. Philosophy applies to many things, but in this instance, I think it does, because like if somebody needs to be at work at eight, or they need to be at class at nine thirty sharp. I don't think they have time to mess around and like try and get on the app and then give us data and then lead the town of Cochrane, because we have this data-driven approach. I think at a certain point, we need to make the leap of faith and just tell Cochrane like, look, this is the commuter schedule, beat your community stop. And then we'll get you into the city to your place of work or place of study. Um so I guess I might, I'm just really wondering, is is that something we're seriously thinking about? How much money would that cost to make that leap of faith?
So we have the signs printed for the uh fixed route, we were able to do that through the Green Trip funding, it's definitely possible. Um with COVID and our partner uh Southland and the modeling we're getting, it doesn't seem wise to jump right to that.
Right.
Coming out of COVID, but we have the ability to do that, we have a quote for the sign install, so it's really just, and we have benches now in place in a lot of the key. Uh locations, so it's not a huge financial jump, it is um systematically a fairly large jump. Uh even just for scheduling of those fixed routes, it does get very challenging, a community like ours that. When we show other people from other transit agencies are shocked by the challenges we face with connectivity. It's uh again, trying to build a route around the traffic patterns of Cochrane and and a train and. We'll, we'll be struggling a bit to make sure that we have those connections, so starting with on-demand that has a little bit more. Um real-time traffic data is a better start, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, my my closing comment is I think we should try and have that done during this term, I think. The the good, really reliable commuter service using our existing infrastructure, thanks, great work, appreciate it.
I just wanted to make a comment about the school buses, because I know right from the beginning, we talked about, we didn't want it to be a program for school. Use, and but we did want them to go to Spray Lakes or to volleyball or whatever they have to do after school. Um there's four months of school left yet this year, is there any way that we could cut this off sooner? To send a message and to start using the buses in a better way?
I can help with that, actually, um respectfully, I. While I appreciate the thought and the message that it would very clearly send. Uh the concern that uh we discussed and why we decided that it was better off to. Um provide a little bit of notification and get through the remainder of the school year, is because there are potentially families that have found themselves reliant now. On the Colt service and may or may not be in a position to be able to afford to transition over to school busing. And with everything else going on for people coming through COVID, um and financially, we didn't think that it was appropriate. Um to make a leap, we've managed thus far, um and because there is only another couple of months left of school in the school year. Thought it better to transition away, it was always the intent, you are correct, that we were not going to compete with the school buses. Um it has found its way here now, I think the proposal that Mr. LaFash has provided is a good one, it still provides access to the school. Outside of those regular school hours using our Colt service, um but the intention ahead of transitioning that at the end of the school year. Was to not um have that result in any undue hardship on families that may or may not have found themselves now reliant on a service that they weren't aware wasn't intended. Uh to provide that access to the schools during those hours.
I understand that piece, um I just think if they have to start in March or September, they still have to switch back over, so. The costs are going to be incurred either way. Um just a thought anyways, and the more people that hear about it, we might have more of a problem now if the word gets out. Um Council Reed.
Yeah, actually, could I pick on that, do you have any data that qualifies what your assumption is about those families that would be affected in a financial way?
Absolutely not, no, um what I can say though is that making a significant change like that in the middle of a school year can be impactful. And so if you have families that have been reliant on it, um we felt that there was not necessarily a need to make an immediate change. If it's council's wish that we do that immediately, that absolutely can be implemented, Devon was ready to pull the trigger. Um it was quite frankly, my suggestion that we use this time to notify those families and to make sure that the school. And the kids that attend those schools were aware that this was never intended to replace school busing, and that. As of the next school year, we would be enforcing that, um what's happened is we just haven't enforced it, and we've allowed those bookings to um. Take place, so you have people that are reliant on it, so it was generally just simply decided that it was a better approach to. Um implement that transition despite the fact that we absolutely can implement that tomorrow if that's council's desire.
Yeah, I guess, uh two comments, one would be, I think if if information is presented to council and it's somebody's assumption that it should be. Framed in that way as opposed to factual, because it, again, this is not a criticism, and I have all due respect for for whoever made the decision, but. I think it, it should come to council as assumption, this has never been researched, we have no data to back this up, this is just what we think.
There is a bit of qualitative, so I do get the calls, again, the actual challenge I face is. It's parents who call saying, my child can't get to school because there, there's no available buses. And then me having them, kind of taking a step back and saying, well, actually, they're not supposed to be. And but then they're saying, well, their friend is doing it, who lives in Fireside, why can't, or I happen to live um. A lot of times separated parents, they'll have one school bus route, but they won't have the other, so they're just asking, can I just have one week of the. Every other week, can I have that, and a- again, it's very challenging, we just, we don't have enough capacity to meet all those needs, so there definitely is. Uh a lot of people reaching out, and it's even people reaching out, they're upset that they can't um. They can't get service because someone else is already doing that, so it's it's such a big problem that it's impacting people who are trying to to utilize that, to the point of. Hey, other people are gonna start doing it, there's not a lot of capacity to do that.
Yeah, I got, and my point with all due respect was, I think if information is presented to council in a kind of factual way, then it should be factually. Substantiated in terms of research, and again, that's not a hill for me to die on, but again, the comment I made in my own community is. Seeing that single student on a bus has created at least some of my neighbors, uh a kind of. Well, there goes Colt again with one person on it, right, and it, and so while it may be a, it may be a. A heartwarming move to think that some families might be financially disadvantaged by this, there are others. Negative implications of continuing to have a single student sitting on a bus. Um taking up a spot for what might be a senior citizen or or somebody else who really would like to use the service, it's just a comment. The question I actually had was, um we initially had some, was it green money or green grant funds or something?
Green trip, yeah.
Right, and did we, did we get an opportunity, because remember we were kind, it was kind of touch and go, whether we were gonna be able to spend it all. Uh by the deadline, and we got an extension, and did we, did we meet that, and our, and my second question is, are there additional funds, grant? Green funds that might be available that we are accessing, because I know you're a wizard at this.
Yeah, so the Green Trip funding, we did get an extension just a a few weeks ago, uh it is our final extension, they are actually. Ending the Green Trip program in twenty twenty-three, so this is, I believe, our sixth or seventh ex- extension, uh they've been very gracious with us for that. They do see all the work that's underway, so that's why they've extended so far, so we actually have until uh February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. To expense, that's for the transit hub, which again is is expected to be completed ahead of time of that. As well as it's actually helped us with implementing those stops, uh shelters, um we've been able to spread that over. The last two and a half years, which has been very um helpful, uh for again, trying to have a flexible system and starting adding more fixed. Infrastructure, like the bus pads, those pads were funded through for the benches, uh those pads were funded through Green Trip funding, we'll likely do some more next year. Uh with that funding, and that, so that will expire, there is other funding that we're, so Rural Transit Solution, we have. Uh expression of, expression of interest in, as well as zero emission uh buses. Uh so we're always searching for that, that funding for sure, there's very limited the provincial level rate now.
Yeah, it's a federal fund.
It's federal funds right now.
And in, not that you want to ever, want to leave money on the table, but it, could you use some of that money to upgrade your software or enhance your software?
Um again, there, we, that's something we looked at with that uh through Future Cities Canada, having an industry expert who's working with. Ubers, transit apps, all the different software companies of the world, to see, are we not getting the best, RideCo is definitely one of the top right now. It's not like they're missing anything, and even when we spoke with Google, they they're not able to integrate on-demand. Uh transit into their, their um Google Maps or anything like that yet, because there's just not a standardization, so that's where. Us as transit agencies across Canada, North America are trying to create a standard uh for them, so again, it's not so much a challenge of. It's not like our software provider isn't doing what others can do, they're just all at a point where they're trying to to figure out the next step, so. Uh I'd say they're neck and neck, there wouldn't be much of a rationale, we do have some key performance indicators that would uh. Uh require Southland to switch to another software provider if our, if our metrics aren't being met.
Okay, that was the reason I asked, so some of you may know that it, the nonprofit I run has a transit system, and Devon was. Well, uh kind enough to be able to help you and find a company, and they were, they're very accommodating in terms of looking to adapt that. Software, but it comes at a price, right, and so uh I just thought if you could throw more money at your, and you had money, that you were gonna leave, potentially you have on the table, that you could use it for that, so.
Yeah, no, we have used our Green Trip funding for the software, it's a five-year contract with Southland who subcontracted out RideCo. The reason we did that was so that if that software provider wasn't working, we could have them make the switch.
Okay.
Uh as well as they have a better price, because they're now doing on-demand transit for Calgary, Opa Tokes. Um and several other locations across uh Alberta.
Okay, thank you.
Great, Council Fedeko.
I only have a couple of questions with the regional, um when it comes to these executive buses, the thirty-five to forty passenger, what do they do during off? Peak times when they're not running people, like they're only doing so many runs, so what are they doing in between?
Those would be Southland buses, again, their current coaches just sit, they actually, yeah, their current system was, they run into Calgary and they come back empty, so that was one of the key things, we're like, well, that seems. Uh silly, if you can even just put four or five people, that's a a much better service than than having nobody. I guess, especially when we have tech companies here are trying to atta- attract talent into Cochrane, um so those sit, we have looked at with the zero emission um. Bus uh grant to look at what they call vehicle to grid or vehicle to building, so if we went to electric, tying into something like the grid. Again, they serve as a battery, or the rec center, a big energy user, to have parking there, tie into that, this is very. Uh hypothetical a- and and down the road, but it is something we're exploring, because they do sit for a long period of time, like school buses.
Yeah, I mean, it'd just be nice to s- to see if if we're going to be purchasing buses, or you know, it's gonna be an added expense for them to be able to do something in between time and not just sit there. And then um going on Council Nagel's point, and I, and I really liked what he brought up. Um you know, we constantly talk about our community associations and how these are big leverages of ours within the town, and I think that's something that maybe we can. Look to those people in those community associations to engage and find out how many people are actually using the service within, within their own communities. So you know, Sunset Ridge Community Association takes, you know, their own poll to find out how many people are actually using the service, what are they using them for, and then again, it's not. Dumped on top of yourself or administration, we're starting to do some kind of groundwork, just utilizing people who are uh. Are well-versed within their own neighborhoods to figure out what they want from service and what that looks like, because I think. The thing is, is that we're sitting in a cusp, we're not, we're not small, we're not big, but the more people that utilize the Colt service makes us able to expand that service. To fit all needs, but we need people on the bus to be able to expand the service, and so I think it's, it's kind of trying to bring both worlds together and. The more voices that we can have out there to utilize the service, I think the better.
Council McFadden.
Yeah, um I mean, I know it's the committee of the whole, and we're not doing direction or anything, but as a, for a champion under. Overwhelmed parents that are trying to get their kids around, um my voice would be, if we have the capacity to make it work for the rest of the school year. I would much prefer that we, we do that, it's a, it's an insane juggle time to be a parent right now, and if there's a workaround that that works. That's not destroying our system, um I'd much prefer that we find a way to to keep it there instead of making some. Point that statistically, we don't know whether it's taking somebody's spot away either, so that's where I stand on it, it's. At the end of the day, you know, transit is a service that we're using to make people's lives better, and uh this is a case where I think we should be doing that. So that's my voice on that small piece, the overall presentation of where we're at with transit is great, and um. And yeah, I would look forward to a conversation about when we might be able to pull the trigger on some fixed routes to encourage that regional transit as well, so. Anyway, overall, well done.
Great, thank you, and I agree with her comments as well, I just worry about the people that are trying to get on the bus and they can't. Because I have gotten quite a bit of feedback from the community around that, and some people get frustrated and they stop trying, and how do we? Find those people, how do we know how many there are and uh get their feedback?
Yeah, we're definitely, again, you have the gloves there, we're trying to to brand you as much as we can, free advertising. Um but part of the purchasing swag is when we come out of COVID. And looking at their local regional service integration is to really promote it, come out loud like we did for Colt, uh it's just been challenging to. Choose a time, because every time we talk about it, it, the goal line's constantly being moved, so.
So many challenges.
Yes, no, for sure.
So the mayor and I met with seniors on the boat, and there was about fifty seniors came out, and they wanted to talk a little bit about Colt too, but they'd like it. To be dropped off at their door, right, the closest door, and I know it hasn't been open for quite some time because of the pandemic, but it is now, and. So we said that we would share that feedback with you.
We have, we have looked at it, it's a challenge just with hockey tournaments and getting the bus through there, because that's also one of the busier doors, we we went with the rec center. It's a challenge.
Okay, thank you, and uh what else did I have, most of it got answered. Um just regarding the Stony Nakota, you said it was four-year pilot project, so when does it start and how often would they be coming in?
It was actually a a four-month.
Oh, four months.
Very short, um but with the uh possibility to extend, they are getting operational funding, which is again, not offered to municipalities, but to indigenous communities, so. Um it's to kind of replace the Greyhound service that was removed, so. It's four months, they're looking at, again, the schedule hasn't been finalized, but um I think it's. Two or three trips uh throughout the day or maybe even four, it's still really being uh worked out, they're still working on getting their buses uh. Operational and um, but it could be as soon as, again, they were aiming for the end of this month, uh whether that'll happen. Or not, but again, we likely will support them by promoting it through our our Colt uh. Social media, the talent, again, we're we're gonna look to support them as well as we we have from uh twenty nineteen, so.
So it's not a Colt, uh say, have their own buses.
They have their own buses, they have their own name, I I I'm not allowed to say it yet, I don't think so.
Okay.
It looks very nice.
Awesome, I think it'll be a fantastic service, um just wondering how many people still phone in and book the bus versus using the app?
We definitely, again, we don't have very many, it's usually people phoning in for a question, uh again, a complaint. Uh but we still have some regulars who just, they they option to phone in, uh I'd have to get the number on that, but it's it's fairly low, it's under a hundred.
So I know there's a lot of seniors that just don't have the capacity with their phones to be able to use the app, and so we're probably missing a few there too. Otherwise, I think I got all my questions answered, and thank you for the information and the lovely gloves that you left for us. Um any other final comments? No, thank you so much, and keep up the great work. So um we don't have anything else, any other business? I think we will call this meeting closed, seven nineteen. Last hurrah.